Good evening. Glad to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for June the 6th, 2022. If you would, please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. God, we thank you for this opportunity to serve. We pray your blessings continuously upon our school system, our students and staff, and we pray, God, that you will continue to keep them safe over the summer break. Give us blessings, we ask in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is approval of our work session agenda. Have our agenda items before us. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Okay, item number four is our items of information. Dr. Pulis, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to go ahead and we'll move to goal area one, students. It says, tonight we get to recognize our spelling bee winners and also to recognize our NCAA track team. So I'd like to start off by asking Ms. Sheets if you were to take over with the spelling bee winners.
It would be my pleasure. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Shelley Sheets and I'm the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for McIntosh County Schools, and it is my honor and pleasure to be able to talk about our spelling bee winners tonight. You know, being a good speller is a special talent, and it's fun to watch, just like any other talent. But what's interesting about spellers is it seems like they either are born with this natural proclivity to spell, or it's somehow cultivated with a lot of hard work and studying. But I think more often than not, it's a mixture of the two. And what I feel is really cool about spelling is, of course, it's tie-in with literacy and word knowledge. So anyway, I'm really, really excited to award these students tonight. We've got, every year we host a spelling bee, both at Todd Grant and at McIntosh Middle School. So we will award the winner and the runner-up. So I'd like to invite our Board Chair, Ms. Breakman Down, so that she can do the honors. But I'd like to talk just a little bit about each of the spelling bees. So at Todd Grant, they went 25 rounds, which was a lot, and there were some very difficult words. But the winning word ironically ended up being one of the more simple words, and that was fabric, of all words. So at this time, I'd like to ask the remedy comer to come on down. Do you want to picture? Ready, one, two. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to study your work for us?
Don't do me like that.
All right, and the first runner-up is Andrew Richardson. Is Andrew here tonight? There he is. Congratulations, Andrew. The middle school competition was also a good one, and the word that was the winning word for the middle school was buffoonery. So that is a great word. And our winner for the middle school is Georgia Medlock. Not you, but good job to all of our spelling bee participants and our winners especially. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Sheets. At this time, do we have Coach Higbear with his track team?
Yes.
Yes.
Run on up.
And what I'd like to do is have Coach to go ahead and describe the placement of each of the team members and how they did and how the overall team did to present the awards.
We had a real successful track season, both boys and girls, culminating with the state meet. We had a nice little article in the local paper of our state places. We have a few of them in here. Derek Irons was a two-time medalist. Riley Maxwell was a two-time medalist, and Jalen Rogers, Kiana Belton, and Maddie Mattman were also medalists. That came from the great momentum we had in the region, track meet. We were region runner-up to meta, and we, between boys and girls, we had 13 region champions. So we have, and I think the best thing about our program is the overall depth. We don't have the greatest numbers, but we have a lot of athletes that do a lot of different things for us. We were the only team that had all four of our relay, four-by-eight, four-by-four, four-by-two, four-by-one, that made the finals, and we can interchange lots of different pieces in that. We've got a lot of the sprinters here, and Gage Medlock, one of our shot putters, is here. I don't know, you want to come up here?
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll call their names. That way, even if they're not here, we'll get their names out.
I don't have a car for it right now.
Mario Bacon.
Hopefully, he's on his way.
Okay. Will Jones.
Not here.
Andrew Robertson.
Hopefully, he's on his way.
Okay.
We have one Carlos. Cody Paul.
Jaylen Rogers. Okay. Leo West.
Derek Irons.
All right, MJ Quarterman. All right, Jalen Dallas. Delaney Middleton. Shay Roberts. All right, Mr. McIver.
Maverick Steska. Trey Miller. Gage Medlock.
Oh, she's in the back. She's here.
Noah Belton. Kiana. Haley Stevens. Maddie McMahon.
McMahon.
Riley Maxwell. Isabel Tucker. Jerica Bright. And Geraldine Bright.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm presenting our spelling bee winners tonight. We've got to bring out, bring our.
Dr. Pulis, we can't.
Eight-two that next Monday will be, and we'll recognize students from Dikka as well as our evidence of the winners and accomplishments. And that's coming up in a very deep.
Dr. Pulis, you're very baffled. We can barely.
This item, item number three. Yes.
You're breaking up.
You're breaking up. We can barely hear you.
If you could talk a little slower, I think we might be able to hear you a little better.
All right, item three is graduation class of 2022. I'd just like to note that last Friday, we had a great graduation ceremony. We had 74 graduates total. It's brought our graduation rate to 96% overall. So I'd like to commend the high school for their accomplishments, and our students, and I wish them the best. Mr. Willis and his staff have done a great job. He had a tremendous job with graduation last Friday night. Any comments anybody else would like to make about graduation?
It went very well, and the rain held off.
It did.
It was awesome.
It did. If I could ask at this time, each of the principals studying with their elementary school to talk about summer school dates, and if you know approximately how many students may be attending. So, Summer.
Todd Grant, we will be starting our summer school program actually on Thursday and Friday this week, and then we will run it the following Monday through Thursday for two weeks. So we're going to have a total of 10 days. The students will be at school from 8 until 12. We have invited about 115 students, so we're, you know, we're very optimistic about our enrollment.
There you go. Mr. Booker?
He's not here. He's not here. Mr. Booker's not here yet.
Okay, how about Mr. Willis?
I'm here. Yes, sir. High school, summer school's going to start this Thursday and run through the 30th of June. It's going to be 8 to 12, Monday through Thursday each week. It's 13 total days. Students are required if they attend, attend at least 10 of the 13, but we want them to attend all 13 for the credit recovery opportunities there. We've invited 40, give or take. We anticipate 20 to 25. That has confirmed already. We are in the midst of continuing to call parents to make sure they know that summer school is required to stay on track for graduation for future classes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Willis. Is there anybody from the middle school present that could report out of summer school?
Not yet.
All right, well, let's move on to the next item. Item number five, tentative test scores. And I'd just like to, the reason they're tentative is because we'll have the factory and the high students who are full academic year students, et cetera, but the overall test scores will be reflected. If I could ask, and we'll start with Todd Grant and Sandra, if you can pull up your scores and present to the board.
And as Ms. Riles is making her way up, any of our students and parents that were here to be recognized, you're welcome to stay, as always, but if you would like to take this opportunity to go ahead and sneak out, you can do that as well.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming, guys. Thank y'all and congratulations. Great jobs, everybody. Great job.
Good job.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay.
Coaches, thank you, coaches. Thank you.
Great job.
You're good.
Hey, Ms. Bunny.
Congratulations.
Good.
I'm good. Because I figured he'll come in.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Hey, that's something. You do the same. Thank you.
Good night. I know those kids were getting antsy. They were ready to go. Stand up. Mr. McNair, Mr. McNair, will you prop that door open, please? Okay. We have to have the door open.
Yeah.
Okay, ready?
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Morris and I are very excited to come before you and share our tentative 2022 Georgia milestone scores. As Dr. Pulis just mentioned, these are tentative. However, the data that we are going to show you does reflect our non-FA, which is full academic year students. We did identify those children, and we did go through, and we did not factor their scores in. So this is pretty accurate data. Okay, we're going to go through our ELA data first. We're going to look at three years of data. 2019 was the last year that we had a normal school year. It was pre-pandemic. As you know, we did not take the milestone in 2020 because we were, we were all out of school at that time. We returned, we did take the milestone last year. Of course, you're going to see the impacts that COVID played into that. This year, we also were impacted by COVID. We had, this school year, we had 246 students that were out of school because of COVID. They were either testing positive, or they were living in the household with someone who tested positive. So that brought us to a grand total of 1,304 A's that were missed this year by students that were COVID-related. The grade level that was impacted the most was kindergarten, where our students are learning to read. We had 47 students who were impacted by COVID this year. That's roughly half of our kindergarten population, for a total of 260 As. However, with that being said, we have not, we're not going to let that hold us back. We have put a lot of things in place. We have worked very hard, and we definitely are not using that as a crutch. So we will go ahead and look at our third grade ELA data for 2019, 2021, and then 2022 is our yellow bars. So as you can see, if you look at our data, third grade has definitely had a shift across all levels. You can definitely see that COVID had a negative impact in 2021, but we are overcoming a lot of those obstacles, and we're making a lot of positive progress. Level one, just to refresh your memories, level one is a beginning learner. Level two is developing. Level three is proficient, and level four is distinguished. We do have 64% of our kids are our students who are performing at a level two or above. In comparison to 2021 last school year, we had 30, well, actually, this year, we have 30 students who have scored proficient and distinguished as compared to 13 students last school year. So we're definitely making moves. We have a lot of wonderful things in place. Ms. Morris will speak to you about those things after we talk about ELA, and she will share that with you. These are our fourth grade ELA scores. Again, we're looking at three years of comparative data. Again, you can see that we had some small gains at levels three and level four. We looked at this cohort, meaning this group of fourth graders when they were actually third graders last school year, and there was definitely an increase in their performance at level three and level four. Last year, we had 11 students at level three and level four. This year, we have 23. So we're definitely moving them in the right direction. 64% of our students are scoring at a level two or above. 28% of those students are proficient or distinguished. 28 students scored at level three and four as compared to 20 students last school year. This is our fifth grade ELA data. There is a very good shift in the performance at fifth grade. So based on this cohort's performance last year in fourth grade, there were 31 level ones, and so now we're down to 19. So that was a very good move. There were 17 level threes, and now we have 26. There were three level fours, and now we have seven level fours. So we're definitely moving in the right direction in fifth grade. 77% of our students were at a level two or above. 33% of them are level three or above. We had 33 students performing at level three and four as compared to 19 last school year. The next slide that you're going to see is a trajectory. The first dot that you see has 45.71%. That is our CCRPI Content Mastery Score in 2019. And each year, we get, we have a 3% increase, which is our goal. So that expectation is 47.08. And as you can see, at the top of that plot is 54.81. That's where we are currently. So we definitely exceeded our goal, and we are moving in the right direction. Overall, Todd Grant increased the number of students at levels three and four from 52 students in 2021 to 90 in 2022. And now Ms. Morris is going to share with you some of the things that we have put in place to help move our students along academically in English language arts.
Okay, there were several things that we put in place that had a positive impact on our ELA scores. The first one was visible learning. Visible learning shows our kids where they are, they know where they are in their learning, and then it also allows them to know where they need to go in their learning. EIP pull-out is another initiative that had a positive impact on our data, and we also had two ELA accelerated pull-outs for fourth grade. They worked, two teachers pulled like 10 or 11 kids apiece and worked on them, and that had a positive impact. We also did ELA vertical alignment with Judy Helwitt and Risa, and so that was another thing we contributed to our success this year. We also had 112 students in third, fourth, and fifth grade that participated in our after school program throughout the year and our new reading program. We did a lot of work. We really honed in on looking at the standards and what the standard is telling us we need to teach. We are working very heavily with the phonics and the word study in the upper grades and added reading for the kids, so they have books in hand. And we believe those are the things that contribute to our success this year.
All right, now we're going to take a look at our math data. This is our third grade math data for 2019, 21, and 22. Although we do have two more students at a level one this year, we did have a positive shift at levels two, three, and four. We have 76% of our students are performing at level two and above, and 29% of those students are at a level three and a four. We have 26 students there as compared to 14 last school year. Our fourth grade math comparison data, there was a small gain in levels three and four. So based on this cohort's performance in third grade last school year, there was an increase in level threes from 13 to 31 students, and an increase in level fours from one to five students. Actually, is that right? Three to five, sorry, three to five. 83% of our students are at a level two or above. Fifth grade, a slight increase in level one students, however, we did see positive gains at levels three and level four. 64% of our students are performing at a level two or above. Next, we're going to look at our plot line. Our CCRPI Content Mastery Score in the baseline year of 2019 was a 51.43. The expectation is to have a 3% increase, so that would have made our goal 52.97. We exceeded that goal. This year, our Content Mastery Score tentatively is a 55.66. We increased the number of students at levels three and four from 56 in 2021 to 84 in 2022.
Again, visible learning played a big part in the increase there as well. We also had several trainings with Matt Thompson on Eureka, where we worked on honing in on the lesson and the backwards design, where we look at the assessment first and then build our lessons to meet the rigor of the standard and the rigor of the test. So we did that. Also, EIP pull-out also had a positive impact, and we also had a third grade accelerating, accelerated group in math that was pulled out. About 11, 14 kids were pulled out then, too. So we contribute those as positive components that made our scores better. Our plans for next year are for us to focus more on visible learning. We're trying to become a visible learning certified school. We're going to work more with backward design, not only in math, but also in ELA. We're going to also look at the new math standards. We have training already set up with the new math standards that are coming out, so we have training planned for those. And we're going to also continue to improve our guided reading and our phonics and word study instruction.
And finally, we're going to look at fifth grade science. Our fifth grade students take the science GMASS assessment as well. If you look at our data, you can see that we are definitely moving in the right direction as well with our science scores. We have 62% of our students are at a level two or above. 30 students were at level three and four last year, I mean, this year, I'm sorry, compared to 12 students last year. So we definitely are impacting them with science instruction. And that is our 2022 GMASS data.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some good news?
Good job.
That's excellent. Good work.
Mr. Riles, you and your staff need to be commended. What a great job you've done this year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If Mr. Booker could come up and present the middle school.
First off, apologies for being tardy there. I'm used to six o'clock starting. Happens must die hard. We saw some trends in Todd Grant's toward those three and fours, and that's great. Some good things coming. We're going to see something similar when we look at ours as well. We did have, of course, some COVID stuff to deal with and virtual learning formats. So in taking in the data, we have both some quantitative, some number data, and then some qualitative, some more how we felt about the whole thing. So in modified attendance, that's the code we run whenever a kid got put out on quarantine or isolation four half a code. So the total students that got impacted in 2022, 254. We had about 70 kids that weren't out of our punitive enrollment, weren't impacted by it. If we count the number of total school days missed, it ends up being 1,272. It's almost 9,000 class periods total that they missed out. Not to mention the time that we spent on related practices, time that the students spent going to the front office to grab the masks, time that the teachers spent disinfecting, things that we ordinarily would be spending our time and energy with instruction, other things, too. And we also saw some big issues whenever it came to math, students going on virtual and then coming back, really, really struggling to pick up those math standards. On the qualitative side of things, again, that energy and time that would have been spent elsewhere went to pandemic needs. Teachers said that the student stamina and their work ethic decreased. Teachers said that the student stamina and their work ethic decreased over the course of the COVID pandemic. They came back and they just kind of hesitant to get started on the work. Also, we saw a rise in some socio-economic, socio-emotional issues. And they reported that the kids weren't as kid as they once were. You know, they came back with some more adult-type behaviors, and they felt this was largely due to a lot of time spent on devices at home, sometimes unsupervised. Those hours that they would be spending in the classroom, getting raised by our teachers, unfortunately, getting raised by YouTube, and it's not always the best and the brightest for what you want to be watching. But we feel like McIntosh has a system, and we as a school handle it a lot better than most. I know in many schools that I talked to out there, they still have lots of students on virtual school when we were bringing them all back into the building. And though our numbers of days were significant, I don't believe they were near as significant as they were in other counties. And so really, I believe that's our trend towards the three and fours. That's part of, part of us having some great teaching, some great things going on. But part of it is just toughing it out, being there and being in the school building. Our scores for ELA, sixth grade, we did have the lowest number of failures that we've had in the last three years, and it should be right on average for the state average as far as our pass rates. And then the level twos, of course, they increased. I think we pushed our level ones into level twos, and we're looking to gain our level threes next year. We did have the highest level of distinguished this year than we've had in the past three years. With ELA in seventh grade, we had the lowest number of failures this year, and we also had the highest number of proficient and above this year in the past three years. So proud of that. And ELA in eighth grade, this pretty well mirrored our administration from last year, which was a pretty good administration. So although we just tied the passing percentage, we weren't too disappointed based upon what we know about the students coming in. In math, our sixth grade scores, this is one of our two scores that did not either tie or beat their pass percentage from prior years. But with this teacher, she's, she's beaten the state average for passing for the last six years in a row or more, and we feel pretty confident in this year's wealth as well. Last two state averages, we're at 22 and 31% failing, and we're at 18% this year. So we feel that's going to be well above the average. Also, we had 76, sorry, 82% of our students that passed against you. Okay, this is one of our best testing administrations, seventh grade math. Real, so a huge jump in this category. So the past two years, we had 33% and 25% of our students failing this test. We had 14%, so cut it in half. And our level threes and fours, we went from scoring about 20% up into 25. So, I'm sorry, 31, big jump there. So Mr. Heck, he did an excellent job. Those students really cranked out the work, and we're glad that we saw those scores. Eighth grade, what we saw here was a jump in our three and four categories. We didn't beat the pass fail rate that we had the past two years, but our proficient and distinguished categories jumped significantly. So we had a total of 28% there, whereas in past administrations, our highest was 20. Science, this is also one of our big gainers. Again, went from a 43% failure rate, which was actually better than the state average at 46% last year. This year, it's going to be a 33%, which is on track to beat the state. Also, our proficient and distinguished categories took a big jump. Went from being 23% and 18% in the two prior years to now at 35. Really proud of Mrs. Deverger and the work she's done there. The 9% of students in that distinguished category should beat the state average. And I believe that was the same thing on seventh grade math. It seemed like it would be close to it. But that's something that we have not been able to attain in the past. You know, we've been stuck in the sort of a two run where our kids, we'd come close to beating the state, state average or right at it for passing, but we couldn't push them to the three and four categories, and so that's what we're seeing this year. Again, just really proud of that. Georgia Studies, this is another one of our two categories that did not beat their pass fail rate for prior years. But looking at our proficient and distinguished, we did much better than last year. And then Algebra, eighth grade algebra, this was kind of the crowning jewel here. Administrations in the past, and these are all our gifted and advanced students every year, each, each of the three years. So we went from having 33% failure rate to 6% and now 0% failure rate. If you look at our categories threes and fours, we're looking at 80% of our students scoring in a level three or four, and our highest administration prior to this was a 50%. We did do some things different with algebra this year. We had another connection class that we added in, so the students got effectively double digit in that algebra. And they also had two years of strong math teachers prior to this year, which we felt was a big game changer, too. I think we're still looking at the, the, un-updated version. We had a little bit of data change. But we had seven out of the nine tests where we beat our pass rates. And we had two, one missed it by a single percentage point. Again, six years in a row, they beat the state average. And then the other one, we had our highest level three and four performance in the past three years. So some positive things there as well. Overall, math had a very good administration. We continue to grow each year, and ELA teachers continue to be solid. Our physical science test was very impressive, and the score should really cross those state averages. And again, we feel like those gains in math and physical science are not just due to great teaching and great teaching practices, but due to the county and the school's response during the pandemic. One thing, one thing I did put on the slideshow that wasn't really included was something I feel we need to be cognizant of and kind of careful about, because I feel like we're running at high upward right now and have been for the past two years in comparison to some of the other schools. Now, that may change in the near future. As these other schools all get back into the building and get back into these face-to-face scenarios and away from virtual, you're going to see their output start to pick up. So we need to make, make sure that we are continuing to grow, or else it's going to seem as though we're slowing down because they're picking up.
Yeah.
But overall, again, we're proud of our testing administration. And I think Todd Grant, you've seen the same things in the rise in threes and fours. So district's going a good way. We need to keep it going.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Booker.
Good job.
Hello, everybody. I'll present the McIntosh County Academy, the high school scores. One of the things, talking about the impact of COVID this year, many of our kids missed 10 or more days. They were quarantined and/or they were sick. I am pleased to say, and if there's a positive to come out of COVID, I will try it right here. So just go with me, but I'm, I'm genuine when I say this, that the students that missed those days due to COVID this year at the high school were able to stay on track and be successful for the most part. The vast majority of those kids passed their classes, they passed their EOCs, and quite a few of them graduated three nights ago. And I think there's three reasons for that. First of all, hats off to the district plan and the execution of that plan across the board for the one-to-one Chromebooks and using Google Classroom. Our students that were out any number of days, most of them took to heart that it wasn't two years ago where they would send and maybe, maybe not, but they actually did the work. They kept up, and they were able to stay with their classes and re-enter after their 10-day quarantine, five, however many seamlessly, or more seamlessly than they used to. So that worked in a big way. Our schedule, first of all, there's two parts to the schedule, I think, helped us be successful this year as a school and on these tests. First of all, block schedule has been fantastic. One of the things that we've done, and I know Mr. Booker mentioned about, you know, moving away from the virtual test, talking about, you know, the idea that students don't learn as well with a computer for the most part. There are a handful that thrive with that, but most don't do it as well as with a teacher in front of them. So that face-to-face, it gives us an opportunity to put them back in. That gives them an opportunity to put them back into classes when they fail them instead of having them learn classes on their own. Also, the 2:30 to 3:30 block time has been super successful with students coming in for tutoring and remediation, and our students take advantage of that. Now, we'll go ahead with the comparisons. Okay, our algebra comparisons, we did the three-year comparison as well. Light blue is prior to the pandemic, and then the last two years, we're moving, it held even not. I think, are those numbers correct for last year?
Yes, we only had 19 tests last year because coming out of the pandemic, so many kids went into foundations of algebra because we wanted them to catch up as much as possible. So we only had 19 Algebra I students testing last year.
Okay. So as you look there, those numbers, you know, we did jump up in the ones there, but a lot of our ones did push to twos. And then all of those, the 65 students that made a two, made a seven or above. So they passed algebra, which is a great thing. Then if you look at our level threes, those, those tripled easily to 21, and then she did have one distinguished there. Okay? American literature, Ms. Levin is absolutely killing it. You know, she holds a high standard. Her kids reach that high standard. She never brings that bar down. But as you look there, our level twos went up to a 35, and our level threes, 38. And she also had two distinguished, so most of our kids are passing that with passing grades as well. Biology, biology held even. One thing I do like, that in the level ones, the stair steps go down. So we have decreased the number of kids that are failing that class. And level twos went up. That's where some of those kids from level one went. And some of the level ones went to level threes this time with 30% and had six distinguished.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Who teaches that class?
Ms. Barnhill.
Ms. Barnhill.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And she's coming back. You know, part of the success on these things is consistency with teachers.
True.
You got to find good folks, great folks to teach these children and then, you know, have them, have some consistency there where the expectations are known, and there's no surprises when these kids get in those classes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay. All right, in U.S. history, our level ones did go up somewhat, but down from two years ago. Those pushed to level twos. Level threes went up to a 27 and nine distinguished. And that's the high school. We don't give as many tests. We only give four now. State reduced it to four. Do you have any questions from here, Ms. Wilson?
Looking good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good progress.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Any questions from the book, from the end of that ILOG, if you can possibly throw it there?
No questions, but we would just like to tell you that you're muffled again. We can't understand you very well.
I apologize.
That's fine.
To go to area two, organizational effectiveness. Ms. Tammy, if you can discuss the FY '23 budget, and we'll open up the public hearing for any concerns that are public to have.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So this is the approved tentative budget. Now, there have been no changes to it. As you can see, we have a general fund budget of $15.4 million, and the special programs fund, which is the school nutrition of $916,000, and the SOR III budget of $1.9 million, and the projects, the local project fund of $2.5 million, giving us a total expenditure budget of $20.8 million. Any questions or anything you all needed to add?
Anyone in the public have questions? Madam Chair, if there are any questions, we can move on to the next part.
Okay. I don't see any questions. No hands raised.
All right, so Ms. Franklin, you'll talk about the financial report?
Yes, sir. Okay, if you would return to page one of the financial report. This is through May 31st, the general operating account. We began the month with $2.9 million. We had receipts of $1.3 billion and disbursements of over $1.9 million, leaving us with a balance in the general operating account of $2.3 billion. The general fund revenues. Okay, taking out the next page, please. Taking out the $2 million general fund transfers. We had $14.1 million in general fund revenues through the month, that's period to date for the year through the month of May, and that is 94.8% of our budget is $15 million. I would like to point out that if you go back a page, the tax revenues, we have collected 90% of our levy for the current year, and 105% of our total budget is, we've actually received over a half a million in prior year taxes this year with our general at the long taxes. Expenditures, page 29. Okay, period to date expenditures are $12.3 million, which is 81.51% of our budgeted $15.2 million general fund expenditures. Do I have one balance on the book? I did put one balance on there. I missed a page. I'm sorry. General fund. I must missed it altogether. I'm sorry. I do not have the, this. Okay, the ending fund balance for May 31st of the general fund is $14.1 million. I'm sorry, you don't have that page up there, but it is on page 34 if you scroll. Next, school nutrition. School nutrition balance, $227,966. Local projects, $1.9 million. Money market account, just over $2 million. And Georgia One Fund, we have squashed receipts of $152,010, and we have $1.18 million in the Georgia One Fund debt service accounts. And that's all I have? Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Tammy.
Consider transfer of the money out of the money market account. We have just over $2 million in that account to the local projects account. And then also, at the end of this fiscal year, which is the 30th of June, we would like to move any of the excess money that we project, over the 15% that were allowed to cheapen our fund balance, to also move back to the local projects account. That amount will be determined at the end of the actual fiscal year. That would cover, Madam Chair, items three and four.
Okay. Anybody having questions?
All right, please.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
All right, item five is the nutrition department overview. And just to bring it to the attention of the board again, that as it stands right now... And just to bring it to the attention of the board again, that as it stands right now, our reimbursement rate will move from 100% to projected 79%. The federal government has been reimbursing at 100%, but we're being told that they're going to change that for this next fiscal year. So, we received notice that rose on the 27th of April and that, as it stands right now, this is, this is a projection that we anticipate. We do anticipate as well that if we drop the 79% reimbursement rate, that that's gonna be anywhere from $25,000 to $30,000 deficit each month. So, we're looking at options for making sure we make that up. And please remember that the nutrition department receives their money from the state and federal government. It does not come out of the local funds unless, unless we exceed the actual amount provided by the state and federal government. So, we do know that food costs are higher than normal and that there's also shortages. And we anticipate moving to one serving line at the high school and one serving line at the middle school. And so, as it stands, these are all projections. We had a conference last week with the state and we, you know, there, there's people concerned about this throughout the state and what this may mean. So, more follow on it, but I just could give you a heads up on it.
Dr. Pulis, while we're talking about this and just while we have Rose in the room, just for clarity, will our students still all receive free lunch?
Yes.
For this next coming school year?
We'll still receive these for the next four years.
Okay.
Actually, this is gonna be our second year. So, we'll still have two more years after this.
Okay. I just didn't want, if somebody in the public heard the percentages were changing, that, you know, if they were gonna get concerned if they needed to start paying for lunches. I just wanna make sure we clarified that.
But, yeah, we'll still have three more years counting the next one.
The next one, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Harrison, is there anything I left off on that nutrition department overview?
I think you covered everything.
Are there any questions on that? If I could go to item six. And item six, again, is just a reminder that the summer conference starts on June the 10th. And so, there are training sessions that will be taking place on the 9th. And we'll start our dinner on the 8th as well. So, those, those items have been scheduled. Homeboard training will take place on June the 22nd and that will include the board members from Lynn County. And item number eight, if I could ask if you will review the minutes? If you have any questions about the minutes, any corrections, comments that you get with Ms. Lynn or myself, please? Are there any questions on that? If item nine, facilities and operations, Mr. Monster, would you step forward, please? And pick us from there.
All right, great evening, board. It's a pleasure to stand before you. Tonight, my first agenda item is sports lighting proposal, McIntosh County Academy. Before you, you'll have two different proposals. If you'll have your attention to the proposal that has, it says football field and then football field standard color lighting. Even though it says practice field, it was just to delineate the difference between. These are their side-by-side comparison of a standard LED installation. That would be straight LED that with no bells and whistles, as, as you would say. And then, beside it, you'll see the breakdown of the sports lighting with a little bit more of a flair to it, if you would say. As you know, when we're at graduation, we're in need of an upgrade or we're gonna be down the road of making the calls and trying to find bulbs again and possibly try to just patch our system and maybe schedule it for later. The timeline for this, it is possible, not impossible. It's a very tight timeline and not to sit here and say, oh, there's pressure. But, however, if we were able to move forward in any direction that you, your pleasure, it's possible that we could have that before football season starts. Our first football game is not until the second week of August, so that gives us a little bit of time. And it's possible to get that done. Otherwise, we'll be looking at a costly adventure. I think there's nine bulbs out. I think we'll have to replace those and then look at what comes down the road.
Do we have any bulbs and do we have any extra supply?
No, we, we had a very difficult time finding them. When they go out periodically, they're, they're bulbs like they do. And we've had a trouble finding them the last time. They're out there. I'm not going to say that they're not out there, but they're not making them. They're in new, new stock somewhere, a company that we have and they climb the poles and we could get it done. So, there's no threat of us not having football season because of our lighting situation. The two proposals before you are just options for you to consider, the different financing plans. I will note that the difference between the LEDs with color and the football field straight lights per month is not a huge difference, if you were to break that down. I wanna remind you that.
Yeah, it is.
We are saving some money with our solar up and running. I'll be talking about that. A few other energy initiatives that hopefully will offset that. So, just peruse it. If you have any questions on sports lighting, let me know. All right. B, air conditioning in the auditorium at McIntosh County Academy. We did have, in our ABM project, a lot of our ACs replaced. However, this was one area that we didn't have replaced. We have an initial estimate for replacing that AC unit. It's a 15-ton unit. It's a pretty big unit. And it's pretty costly. Before we bring it to you, we will have two estimates for you. So, I just wanted to put it on your table that we are in the process of securing estimates for that for replacement of that AC unit. It happens to be the AC unit that covers the main auditorium. We've been able to get by with a few of the events that we've had by pumping up the backstage, the stage and the three other units. There's four units total, the three others. And it can keep up, but it's just not gonna be energy efficient. And we're gonna be okay. It's not an emergency. However, it's gotta be done before, I believe, this summer or as soon as we can so that we can be at optimal performance in that auditorium. It's such a beautiful place. We want it to be cool.
Just to let the board know, we're looking at in excess of $30,000 to replace that one unit.
And, um.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Pulis, where would this money come from? The general fund?
I, I can't quite hear you, but I said, to replace one of those air conditioning units, you're looking at upwards of $30,000.
Ms. McDonald asked where that money would come from. And I'll say that we're working with Leonard McCoy and our facilities. And there is a possibility that we are at the point where we're earning money for ACs and we're exploring all the options through some state funding. There'll be a local contribution, obviously, but it's a possibility that McIntosh County Academy is at that level, that we are earning some money for ACs. Most likely won't cover the full cost, but some of that cost.
Okay, and where's the?
Running on the income clause.
Okay, and so, where's, where would the money come from for the football lights?
Well, again, as you see, that this is a leasing situation that will go through Georgia Power and it'll be a monthly cost. So, it's not an all-upfront cost that would go onto our, our bill. And what I was hoping for, and I think that is very reasonable, that the energy savings that we're getting from our solar, from our initiatives that we're putting in place, that it would be an offset. So, hopefully, we wouldn't have to increase our lighting expenditure, our energy expenditure, that it would still be a net zero. I, we won't know that for, for a fact, but it's very likely that that's a possibility.
And how does that factor in with the ABM lease agreement we have now?
No, no effect on the ABM lease agreement. It would actually behoove them because if, they're more energy efficient. So, it would look like they were saving money for us even more. And it's not going to affect our agreement with them in any way. It only makes our system stronger in the end. With quality lighting, I think that will have a big impact on our field and safety, all the factors that go into lighting.
Do you have any other feels regarding including in any of the numbers that we utilize for ABM?
Thank you.
All right, item C. This is very exciting news and I'm so tickled pink to be able to tell you about it is that the state and its planning has now allotted McIntosh County the ability to purchase six new buses. They're going to be funding that. Now, again, as you know, how the state works is that there is gonna be a local contribution that has to be, they only, they say you can get six, but they don't fully fund six. So, we're working out the final details of the numbers of maybe we have, I believe, three years to get these six buses. And if we could possibly plan on buying three or maybe all six, depending on how everything works out, it's, will be a game changer for our fleet. That'll bring us up to about 11 buses that are pretty new, all AC. We have six plus four or five that we have now that we've been purchasing. We've been smart and purchased three. We've got two on the way. We had a couple new ones. It will be a total transformation of our transportation fleet from, as you know, two years ago, to think back of what we were dealing with to the possibility of a updated, beautiful fleet with new buses that are AC. I think it, if it were to come to fruition, that we could get all six, that there would be one bus that would be on a regular route that didn't have AC. So, that's a game changer for McIntosh in a big way. We'll work out the final details of what we would have to contribute to get the six and bring that to the table. But, I believe the number was 568,000 roughly that the, the state was chipping in. The unfortunate part is, as you know, the vehicles are going up. At the same rate, a bus that was 130,000 last year is 150,000 plus this year. So, it has, it has its challenges before us, but it's gonna really pay dividends for us moving forward.
If the board can put this in perspective, that the state is gonna give us the six allocations, they're gonna give us 500, let's say, 550,000 dollars. That's equivalent to buy only three of the six. So, at a cost of 155,000 a bus. I do think that Ms. Franklin and I can figure out how to pay for the remainder and once we are able to close out the year. So, I'll probably come back and asking the board to consider the purchase of these six new buses.
Again, 100% turnaround in our bus fleet. A dream come true for our transportation director and a school system to be able to transport their kids and save new buses that are ACed in this, this time. D, gas purchase options. Dr. Pulis wanted us to really look into the best way to save on gas, what we needed to do. And if that included, if we wanted to have a gas tank of our own, a big giant one that we could fill and then get gas. With the addition of our microbuses, they, microbus doesn't come in diesel. We have a diesel tank and we pump all of our buses, get diesel at our shop. But, the gas buses don't have that option. We have to go to the Jiffy Store, to the Friendly Express and get gas. So, we had a fantastic meeting with the gentleman who owns Friendly Express and he really explained out all the costs, benefits and the pitfalls that you, you have if you were to purchase your own tank and fill it. And what we came to realize is that it's just not going to ever be caught up. We're not gonna gain our money back by spending a $75,000, almost $80,000 for a tank and all this suppression when they're getting gas at almost cost. They're not selling it, but pennies over cost at the gas station. So, it was, it wouldn't be any kind of, it would take 100 years for us to turn around on the gas savings that we got. But, we did work some wrinkles out that we were buying gas here and there and we found out that we're consolidating where we're getting our gas. We learned about what, the difference between a branded gas company and a non-branded gas company, all the details in there was so enlightening. And we have the option of possibly getting a card from a company and saving a few cents even on top of what we would say by going to selected gas stations. So, I'm really excited about learning as much as I did about the gas business. And unfortunately, or not unfortunately, fortunately, that we have good guidance and we're just gonna be smart about where we get our gas and when we get it and make sure that we're diligent with that. I was really, I think, proud of the planning that we did that when we knew that the gas prices were turning around, Dr. Pulis gave the directive to, we ordered and filled up all of our diesel tanks, filled it up to the max, even when it really wasn't ready. And we got a good deal at that time compared to what it is now. So, we, we hit a home run on that. We're, we're full, we're ready to go. And as they go up, McIntosh is ready for diesel consumption this summer, for summer school and moving into next year. So, we're not gonna go with a gas tank, but we are going to be a lot more efficient with our gas purchases in that learning module.
Mr. Monster?
Yes?
Any of those six buses that we were talking about or you were talking about, will any of those be propane?
No, these will all be diesel, diesel buses. That's not that, that we can't buy propane, but we've had an experience with propane. And here's the propane is, there's a lot of positives for it, but there are some of the negatives is that the distance you can go on them. Like, we don't wanna send any of our propane bus on any long trip because they're very limited in their distance. And that was one of the major pullbacks from our propane. Because we do have one or two propane buses at this time. And we have our own propane tank, but they're just not as efficient for us in, in going to the places we need to go. Because we wanna have all these buses on the move. We're very blessed to have a lot of our coaches have stepped up to the plate, gotten their driving CDLs and they'll be taking some of these newer buses out. So, good question, though. It's something to explore. There are some, some benefits to it, but I think that we're trying to streamline our fleet. If you keep all the buses the same, we can, that this motor, this engine, you know, our mechanics get to know this bus. Working on a propane bus is a different beast than it is on a diesel bus. We've been going out of our way to stay, we're Bloomberg, we're gonna stay with this model bus. We're trying to go rear-engine buses and unify our fleet. So, it's one system that we can, when we are, it is time to get rid of us. We'll leave, we'll steal parts off of one that's not, and they're all the same. So, having a unified bus fleet is a game changer in itself right there. So, solar project, wow. It's been a, a long road coming, but it's almost coming to a completion at Todd Grant. It's hard to see over there, but all the racks have been put up. A lot of the electrical has been taken care of. The actual putting on of the solar panels is not the long labor-intensive area. So, as soon as they get to 100% and they did a good job of working with us. They held off during testing on purpose. They, at the, at the very first call that it was being a little loud, they stopped work. They've worked with us in a big way, but now it's summertime and it's time for them to turn the afterburners on and they've told us they will. So, they'll complete, I am predicting in the next week or two should complete Todd Grant and then make a full run at the middle school for a completion date as soon as possible in the future so we can start realizing those savings. I'm really excited about that. Mr. Barnes has been absolutely great to work with and it's been a pleasure. Any questions on solar? All right, McIntosh County Middle School Kitchen Project. If you've had a chance to go over there, you'll see that it's in full gear now. Already having drywall being put up, obviously everything has been roughed in, all the plumbing, all the electrical and drywall is going up. I've been, had the privilege of going there on almost every day and I've got a great slideshow in the works for you so that, that project's coming to fruition. So it's in, in good repair. We're working on, like you said, the drywall and everything seems to be going well with the kitchen project. I hope that we're on a timeline for a start of school. We'll see, or very, very close after. We still are in a withholding pattern. We'll see about when some of these big equipment items are still able to come in. We're predicting that possibly that refrigerator is still going to be what's holding us back from making our next move on Oak Grove. But take a walk through there, schedule a time with us, we'll walk you through and you'll see that it's really exciting what's going on. Any questions about the kitchen project? My last one is Todd Grant Painting Project. Again, we're excited about being on a five-year painting plan so that our schools are looking good. I know that it's been a little tough and I want to thank the teachers because they've all stepped up to the plate. Thank Ms. Rouse for the directive. Everything's coming off the walls. We're painting the whole school and it's going to look really fabulous. So with that painting is going to be a host of challenges that we are going to face. We have a summer school going on, the floors going on, 21st Century Grant and the Girls and Boys Club, all these things, but we're going to do the dance, we're going to do our due diligence and it's going to be one of the most productive summers ever at Todd Grant for educating kids and keeping our building safe, secure and beautiful as it can be.
Are these, are these two separate quotes?
What it is, it's two quotes for you to see that show that we got two quotes and we went with the lower quote. It was a major difference, but it's a person that, who we've worked with, we trust, we know and who does good work, so.
And it's the exact same work?
Exact same work. Dr. Paulson schooled me very well in making sure that I let, show you apples to apples and we gave them both, this is what we want and this is what we want to quote for and same, same work. Those are the two prices.
So, okay, and both of these quotes are labor, labor only?
Yes, let me make that, it is labor only. We, it's better for us to purchase paint because we don't have to pay taxes on it. So we will purchase paint approximately, I don't want to say out and be wrong, but I think it's around five or 6,000 in paint. That will be an additional cost to that.
And the second quote was just labor?
Both of them are just labor. Both of them have all the specs that together that, what they're going to do for the door jams, all the, all the things, they were given the both, here's what we want and these are the prices.
Big difference.
So who is, who is south propaneing? They, they painted the high school, they painted the middle school?
They've done most of our painting and they painted the lobby, they painted the high school when we did that high school project.
Wasn't that just last summer?
Yes. And they've done all very good work.
Okay. Wow. Okay.
Any other questions? Well, I tell you, summer's in, in full swing. We're really excited about moving forward and having a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mossa, can you pick up on goal area three with COVID and the two overnight?
Yes. So, goal area three, COVID. Please for now, give you that obviously no students in the building that are COVID positive. That's, we have some summer school kids coming, but none of them were, so our numbers are 000 for exposed students at this point. COVID positive, we do have one Todd Grant, one central office person, so two people total positive. We've had, been very blessed in McIntosh County to knock on wood, not have a major outbreak. Again, I always like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that even through summer school, we're not going to back off on our protocols for COVID, meaning that we're still cleaning, we're still doing the things we need to do, still promoting hand washing and not thinking that it's over. It's not over just yet. We know that it's still out there. We're going to still be as diligent as we can and take all the precautions necessary to try to minimize and spread that we can. So we're doing well, but we, we're not taking our foot off the gas with that.
Okay.
Goal, number two, overnight field trip request for the McIntosh County Academy's boys' basketball. You'll see that before you on June 10th through the 12th. You're going to have a little trip on there. And then an overnight field trip request for the track team, May 12th through the 14th. And we're doing, we've got protocols in place that we'll make sure that these get to you every time.
Any questions from the board on goal area three?
No. Do we need to approve tonight this basketball trip since it is this week? Or do we want to just approve it next week?
And then Chair, if you can approve it tonight since the date's on June 10th to 12th.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion to approve overnight field trip for the boys' basketball team from Coach Warren?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Straggles, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. We'll do the other one next week because we're already a month behind on that. Okay, go ahead.
All right, next area is the quality workforce. If I could get you a full up the social security overview. We've had a lot of discussions over the past few months about why we don't pay the social security in McIntosh. But we did run a survey and this is a survey, not a vote, it's not one, it's not something that stands. It's just to get an interest to see where we are and whether or not our employees would like to contribute and for us to have to contribute, imagine part. So over 130, we had 130 responses. As you can see, the number that represents each of the areas by colors. You go to the next one. The question that was asked of them is whether or not they would want to have 6.2% of their money taxed for social security. And so as you see by far, the majority still would say yes. That was a surprise to us. And then the same question goes to if we believe that all new employees should have the opportunity automatically. And again, overwhelming, the answer was yes. Now, I've asked this team to calculate if we actually did this, it would amount to over $400,000 in addition to our annual budget. And so obviously we've got more homework on this, but I did want to bring it to the attention of the board regarding where we stand on it. I'll have some more discussions. I don't know that we're ready to pay social security, but obviously the interest is clearly there. Any questions from anybody on that? All right, barring that, next area up here is item two, personnel overview. As we stand right now, we only have one vacancy on our classified staff and that is a, we're short one fifth grade teacher. So we're still pursuing that and we're looking at some options on how to handle that, but right now we're short one teacher. And for this time of the year, that's not bad. I'd like to have 100%, but we're still going, we don't want to hire just anybody, we want to make sure we hire somebody of quality. The retirement recognition was held this afternoon and would just like to congratulate our three individuals who retired, retired this year. And I was not able to attend, but I was told that the ceremony went spectacular. And Madam Chair, we'll have personnel in executive session. At this time, if I go into goal area five, community engagement, and I believe Mr. Dayton Austin is there to present on the Sandra Deal Grant and the 21st Century Grant. Dayton, if you would come forward.
Thank you so much. My name's Dayton Austin, I'm the Director of Operations for the Boys and Girls Club of South East Georgia. And just first want to thank you so much for welcoming us into your school system, into your community. It's been a great year and a half. We've done some amazing things. One of the things that we've got coming up this summer, we were able to, we were lucky enough to be able to get some money from the state through the Sandra Deal Grant, which directly funds education in the summer and out of school time. So we are going to be working with both Todd Grant and McIntosh Middle School. We will be offering, so Boys and Girls Club will be funding teaching positions outside of summer school to, to work directly with the kids that are involved with Boys and Girls Club. So basically a child can come in, if they're mandated for summer school, they will go through their, their few hours of mandated summer school and then they'll be invited to stay onsite to work with Boys and Girls Club staff for the rest of the day. And that's while summer school is going on. During that time, non-mandated students that are, that are not mandated to be at summer school are able to be a part of the Boys and Girls Club and go through a slightly knocked down version of summer school with our certified teachers that we're funding to work directly with them. So that's during summer school. Once summer school is over, we will continue that program with funding teachers through, through the entire summer. And our hopes is to get about two hours of direct academic instruction for these students. We are lucky enough to be able to offer that at no cost to the parents of McIntosh County. So that's due to, to the Sandra Deal Grant, the partnership with the school system, with the space we've been able to provide and the funding that has gone into that. And we've been able to ship some, some funds around to apply that to the summer. So we are incredibly excited to offer that program. Both the schools have been, have been very welcoming and collaborative. We are currently finalizing our teachers that we're going to be hiring for the summer to work for us. We are also excited to announce that we are in the final stage of the grant process for the 21st Century Grant. And 21st Century Grant will be a five-year grant focused on K2 age group kids. And it will be about $350,000 over five years to, to directly fund advancement in education outside of school hours. So it'll be, it'll look a little bit like what we do and very much like what we do in Glen County, which is students will stay after school for academic instruction by certified teachers and then they will finish out their day with instruction by Boys and Girls Club. So we will know by July 20th if we have been granted that money. And that is, that is for McIntosh County, it's 100% for McIntosh County. But we feel in the, in what we've seen in past years with our experience with 21st Century, we feel really good about where we are and the direction we're headed. So those are the two updates on those. We are also, you know, as you know, we're still renovating and getting this space at Oak Grove, Wayne, at the middle school. And so hopefully by sometime this summer, middle of summer, end of summer, we will be able to, to actually have kids in there and serving there. Until then, we will be serving them in the schools and we're working, as Dr. Mossa said, we are working with the schools to kind of find space and move around as needed as these summer renovations and things are happening in the school.
Great. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we certainly appreciate your presence in our community.
The Boys and Girls Club addition to McIntosh has been incredible. If you think about the fact that they're going to provide free tuition for this summer with the addition of that 21st Century Grant, that's over $300,000 every year for five years. And we're hoping to have that final decision in July and we'll know if we got that grant. So great, great addition, great service by Boys and Girls Club. The last item on here for community engagement is the district parent and family engagement plan. That basically is this coming school year and there's very little difference between that and last year's. If you'd like to take a few minutes to look at that, it's a plan that we have put in place and how we handle our, our activities regarding engagement with our families and our parents. Madam Chair, that takes care of the strategic areas. Our next area is as soon as we can address the board.
Okay, and I do have.
Is there anyone there?
I do have one, Ms. Shanda Williams. And as you're making your way up, I'll just remind that we cannot, we ask that you not say names of students or staff members in your presentation. Thank you. And we'll have the timer go off whenever your three minutes are up.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to start by saying I've had two students come completely through the school system. I have two that are still making their way through. I have worked with multiple teachers and staff throughout their time here. They've all been wonderful and I just cannot give enough kudos to so many of them that I've worked with. That being said, I was very concerned when, first of all, we lost Dr. Woski. He was a great asset, I felt like, to the school system. And then hearing Dr., Mr. Willis was going to resign really caused me to have concern. Talked about the, the stability and the, having a steady staff being so important to our students, having somebody they can depend on and lean on. That made me reach out to Ms. Brigman and voice those concerns and I felt like I needed to just make that known to everyone here. It made me ask questions to some of the staff that I have known through the years and that brought even more concern. I felt like what I was hearing, they don't feel comfortable voicing their concerns and that is a problem for our students. If the teachers don't feel like they can come forward with issues that they're seeing or problems they're having, what kind of environment is that for the learning of our students? So I feel like there should be some type of way for these teachers to be able to anonymously make these concerns known because they don't have someone that can do that for them without fear of retaliation. Because that's what I heard repeatedly in speaking with them. They're not able to speak out. I was very relieved to hear Mr. Willis coming back and I feel like that's because of his care and concern for the students. But I wanted to make sure that it's known to everyone here that whatever the cause of that was, should be addressed and looked into. Without going into more detail and naming names, we just, we really have a good staff and we need to retain them and we need to do what is needed to make them comfortable in their working environment. So I would hope that you would look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now have executive session. Richie, do you have legal?
No.
Okay, for personnel. Could I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel?
Madam Chair, we need to add that that's personnel and security.
Okay, all right, personnel and security. All right, motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Ms. McDonald, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Okay, the McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss security and personnel. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver, forgot his name. All those in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Motion carries four, zero. Okay, Superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries four, zero.
Can you have that pulled again?
Yes, the personnel report as submitted.
Are you loading?
McIver, Hewlett and four, zero. You're welcome. Okay, board comments.
I just want to, again, congratulate the, the Spelling Bee or Bee Spellers and the Track Team. Graduation was awesome Friday night, I'm glad we have such a high graduation rate. I appreciated all the administrators coming to give us an update on where our kids are with the milestone scores and I'm looking forward to a great summer and a great new year. Thank you.
Cool. Likewise, congratulations to our Spelling Bee and Track Team and congratulations to Ms. Tucker and Mr. Riggins and Ms. Walker on their retirement.
Sorry.
I know that's something great to be looking forward to and I pray that they have some wonderful latter years and stay safe this summer, kids and staff. That's it for me.
And I too want to congratulate our Spelling Bee winners and our Track Team and our retirees. Hey, I wished I was there.
No, that's right.
But, and I want to commend our, our principals, you know, sister principals, academic coaches, our teachers with a job well done. On the milestones, you know, we, we saw gains, so that's, that's what we're shooting for and, and we're on the up and up, we got good things going on here and I know it's going to get better. And that's, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, and as all the congratulations have been made, congratulations everyone again, especially to our seniors, you made it, you're out of here now. Go and further your educations and come back.
Yeah, you know.
And to the teachers and staff and students, have an enjoyable summer, because it won't be long, you'll be back in the classroom, so enjoy it. Dr. Pulis, you have anything?
No, I just wanted to echo the comments about the great results we received out of the end of grade and end of course tests and again, just shows the focus that we've had on academics. I know that throughout the year, we talk a lot about different things that are going on in the district and it's hard to talk about academics, we really test once a year, but, but the results I think are proven, that the teachers are working hard, administrators are supporting, so I congratulate all of them.
Do you have anything, Mr. Braun?
Ama'am.
Okay, all right. With that being said, we are adjourned.